Could get a motion to approve our agenda, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
We have a motion to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, just a question. I know this Republican participation is at near the end as well as sometimes we have executive session at the beginning and public participation at the beginning. And go back into executive session as needed for second one. What was the, I just didn't know, didn't know the reason.
Originally, we had our, prior to COVID, our, on about our board members, our board business, and then allow the public to speak after, so.
Executive session, sometimes we would have it at the beginning and then come back with the second one, we'd be at the end. We just decided to put it all at the end.
Dr. Thomas put executive session on the meeting. I've had, I mean, I wasn't concerned with any input there for executive session, but I don't know that there's any particular rhyme.
If I may speak, is that?
Yes, ma'am.
I think the reason for executive session at the end was so that those people, I mean, school has started backing everything, and so that those people who don't have to be here for the whole time, you know, for executive session, they could just go ahead and do their part and leave. I think that was our reasoning for doing it that way.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any other questions? Okay, if we could have a motion to approve the, or excuse me, if we could vote to approve the agenda. All those in favor? All right, the agenda has been approved by all parties, and now if Mr. Varner would lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
All right, please stand.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Varner. Okay, Dr. Thomas?
Okay. At this time, I am happy to present Ms. Little with a special recognition. If you would join me in the front, please.
So this is a certificate of achievement from the School Boards Association, and it is granted to Ms. Patty Little for reaching level two, an award issue of institute training program as a school district and board trustee in Lawrence County School District 55. Congratulations.
Okay, I do want to take just a couple of minutes to make an announcement and welcome everyone. I do want to take the time to say, you know, I want to thank Dr. Thomas, her team, and all of our district staff for a great start to our new school year. It's, it's good to be back. Even though our first day of dismissal was interrupted with tornado warnings, as usual, everyone handled it within stride to close out our first day safely. The announcement that I would like to make is the moms of the varsity football team, and JV possibly, I'm not sure. They have asked that I announce that there's a community pep rally on Thursday at six o'clock on the square, and I guess that's when Clinton cross-country and Lawrence cross-country will meet up to pass the football. And they just wanted to make sure that we got the word out to the community, and if you'd like to be there, be on the square Thursday at six o'clock. And that is it. Thank you. We will now move on, and we will need to approve our minutes for the meeting on June 28th. If we could have a motion to do that, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting on June 28, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rawl. All those in favor of approving the minutes for the meeting on June 28th, please raise your hand. Thank you. That was everyone, Ms. Wilson, so that motion has passed. And then we will now move on to our report from Dr. Jason Bailey with EB.
Good evening. Board of trustee members, Dr. Thomas, district staff, parents, community members, and students, thank you on behalf of EB Morris Elementary for the opportunity to speak with you guys tonight. Just want to go briefly, a few minutes, to explain what our goals are for this year and how we are going to address academic recovery and academic acceleration this year. So our district theme is obviously be a champion, and while that process was taking place, we also, as a school, were deciding upon a new vision and a new motto, and our new motto for this year is stronger together. And so we want to make sure that we, as a faculty, come together, not only as a faculty, not only as a family, but as a community, to support our students, to support our parents, and the entire EB Morris community. So the idea and the motto is stronger together through you and I, and that is a play on words. The U stands for uplift, and the I stands for insist, and as a principal, I really have two jobs, and that's to uplift and insist. And in terms of uplifting, I got to make sure that I'm a champion for all of our staff, students, parents, and the wider community. I've got to make sure that I provide support to all stakeholders in my community, and just as importantly, I've got to make sure that I listen to all community members and represent them all. Another part of my responsibilities is to insist, and so I must insist that we be a champion for every student and family in our building, and also that we focus on recovery and acceleration of student growth as we recover from last year. I think I skipped ahead one. So our school-wide challenge this year, I have challenged our, our teachers and faculty to not only recover but accelerate student growth. And so there's three different levels to this challenge that we, we've laid out. First, in all of these deals with MAP, which is our assessment that we use to gauge student growth as we get towards, as we get towards the end of the year in our standardized testing. So for level one, students that are at, at the 60th percentile or below, our challenge, and our challenge to teachers, is that we want to grow those students 10 or more percentile points. And so the reason we, I chose this is because growth is not enough in this day and age. We've not only got to recover the learning that may have possibly been lost, but we've also got to accelerate, and so for that to happen, we can't grow incrementally. We've got to see substantial growth in our kids' academic abilities. Level two, if they're at the 61st to 70th percentile, I've challenged that we, we will grow our students five or more percentile points. And then if a student is at the 71st percentile or higher, which is on the higher end of the scale, and so it's harder to grow those kids, at least one percentile point. And so that's our challenge this year. So how are we going to do that? The, the components that we've laid out is 30 for 30 for all from 210 to 240, so that sustained silent reading throughout. And once that becomes commonplace, and it is at this time, but it's just the second week, then we'll also include our related arts teachers to do some horizontal and vertical enrichment. Basically pull small groups. Once we identify kids that need additional enrichment, we'll use our related arts teachers in that fashion. We also want to use the Understanding by Design and Professional Learning Communities frameworks to make sure that the work that we do in our building is aligned with the standard, and that our assessments and everything we do is aligned with that goal of student learning. We've also departmentalized our fourth and fifth grade scholarly classrooms so that those teachers can dig deep into ELA, dig deep into math, dig deep into science and social studies, without having to worry about covering everything else. We also have an additional enrichment in SEL time during our fourth and fifth grade related arts classes. Those classes will not only go to related arts, but they'll also get an additional class in which they get enrichment through our Exact Path platform, and then they'll also receive some SEL from our guidance counselor. And then finally, we're getting ready to start our after-school tutoring program in September, and that'll be two days a week for 22 weeks. Looks like a couple of slides are missing, but essentially what I wanted to share with you guys is that we are in the process now of building those, those components to accelerate and recover our students' learning, and so our goal this year is not growth, but substantial growth. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey.
Madam Chair, I have a few questions, just if you don't mind. How did you decide on the three levels? Is there, is just, I'm sure there were some.
Yes, sir. So at the 61st percentile, in reality, it's about the 70th or 65th percentile on MAP growth, that is, you're getting into the ballpark of being ready for those standardized assessments at the end of the year. And so if we have a second grader who's at the, I'm going to say the 35th percentile, even though that second grader does not take SE ready or SE pass that year, they're not on track. And so if we say they're at the 35th percentile, and they only grow to the 40th, and then the 43rd, and the 45th, and the 48th, they're never getting to that 65th percentile that we, we want them to get to. So knowing that the 65th percentile is on the lower end of being ready, we wanted to make sure if you were under that, that we challenge you for substantial growth.
And I know you had, we missed some data for, what, 20? I'm sorry, you having to step back and use 2019 data?
So what I'm doing is I'm having, we've created a digital data notebook for all of our teachers, and that's going to include their MAP data from last year, winter, and spring, but not only the data itself, but how long it took the kids to do it, what percentile they were at. And then from there, we're going to include the current data that we're collecting right now with MAP, and then I'm going to collect all that for the teachers so that they don't have to spend time that they should be planning putting data in. And so that'll give them a picture of not only their kids, but holistically as that, that entire class, and we color code it too. So if they see a lot of red, that means those, those are more kids that need substantial growth. So the, the idea is that over time, you go from red to blue, and so that's what you want to see in the three, three different times we do MAP throughout the year.
Cool, thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey. Dr. Thomas?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Board, members of the Board. Over the past week, our team successfully supported the opening of the 2021-2022 school year. It is evident that we have started strong. We finished the 2020-2021 school year strong, and our goal was to start the 2021-2022 school year even stronger. Thank you to all of our staff, our teachers, administrators, students, and parents for helping us start strong. At this time, I have a short video that I would like to show, just to show our first days back, our first week back of school. We had a very busy yet productive return to school. I was excited to be able to visit each school last week, even on the students' first day, as Ms. Little mentioned. We had tornado warnings at dismissal time. Thank you for all of the hard work of our school staff and administrators. We also would like to thank our parents and students for their patience, so I'd like to thank everyone for being champions during that time. Each district office administrator also visited specific schools during the first day as well. I would also like to introduce and welcome our new Lawrence 55 administrators, Mr. Josh Dawkins, the new principal at Sanders Middle School, Mr. Carlos Littlejohn, new principal at Lawrence Elementary School, Ms. Mary Kate Black, new assistant principal at Sanders Middle School, Ms. Joanna Finley, new assistant principal at Lawrence Elementary School, and Ms. Kathy McMillan-Benin, director of academic interventions. We're happy to have each of these individuals serving in their new roles and as part of our Lawrence 55 administrative team. Although we had a relatively short summer, we were still able to provide some very good summer programs and summer learning opportunities for our students. In our SIRDEP summer program, we serve 55 four-year-old students. For our physical education course, we serve 51 students. Our Fine Arts Camp, we serve 17 students. As far as our 21st Century Elementary, Middle School, Elementary School Summer School, sorry, we served 333 students. Our middle school, 21st Century Summer School, we served 144 students, and then with our high school students, we had 78 students who earned credit or credits during the summer. Also, for our third grade summer reading camp, we had 75 enrolled and 67 actually attended, so we had a lot of great opportunities for our students during the summer. From June 2021 through August the 6th, the Department of Student Nutrition served 104,820 meals. This was a tremendous service for our students and our community, so I definitely like to commend our student nutrition department for that accomplishment. EB Morris and Ford Elementary Schools have received grant funding for the Fresh Fruits and Vegetables Program. Students in the two schools will be provided a variety of fresh fruits and vegetables throughout the school day. The Department, South Carolina Department of Education of Health and Nutrition is applying for Child Nutrition Program Breakfast Expansion Grant, and has identified Lawrence Middle School as a participant if the grant is funded. This will provide opportunities for various breakfast options, such as grab-and-go, breakfast in the classroom, and breakfast in the hallway, and the purpose of this is to increase those that are eating breakfast at school. For the 2021-2022 school year, our students will be provided with the following devices: 4K through grade one, two-in-one Chromebooks, grades two through eight, standard Chromebooks, and grades nine through 12 will be provided with laptops. Please note that information about the emergency broadband benefit is available on the district website at www.lawrence55.org, and the EBB is an FCC program to help families and households struggling to afford internet service during the COVID-19 pandemic. This new benefit will connect eligible households to jobs, critical healthcare services, virtual classrooms, and so much more. We had a very motivational and energizing district-wide back-to-school opening day session for staff on Friday, August the 13th, and this was to help us continue to prepare and be ready to welcome our students back on Tuesday, August the 17th. As you can see, trustee Patterson joined in the celebration as well. I shared our 2021-2022 district theme of be a champion. C is for courage, H is for honor, A is for attitude, M is for motivation, P is for perseverance, I is for innovation, O is for optimism, and N is for never give up. Our featured speaker, Mr. Ron Clark, is known to many as America's educator. Mr. Clark was the 2000 Disney American Teacher of the Year, a two-time New York Times bestselling author, and is the founder of the Ron Clark Academy in Atlanta, Georgia. He left us with a lot to think about and implement to make it happen for all of our students as we embark on this new school year. You're encouraged to connect with the school district on social media and follow our hashtag, hashtag Lawrence, hashtag L55 Champions, where pictures and video clips are shared highlighting our theme for the 2021-2022 school year of be a champion. As champions, we will focus on and execute our goals of safety, high-quality instruction, and improved student achievement. And now, just a little bit about a subject that I hope we would be old news by the start of this school year. As we continue to monitor for COVID-19, we ask for everyone's assistance to help provide as safe a learning environment as possible. Parents are asked to check and to be on alert for their child if they are displaying symptoms of illnesses before school each day. If they are showing symptoms, please keep your child at home. Working together, we will be able to make a difference in our school and our community to help slow the spread. As stated in the reopening plan approved by the board on July the 12th, we will continue to follow DHEC requirements for quarantining staff and students who are close contacts with a COVID-positive individual. A vaccination station will be set up this Friday at the Clinton and Lawrence game, sponsored by DHEC and South Carolina Department of Education, and they will be giving out $25 for each eligible person who gets vaccinated. This is completely voluntary, and the mobile unit will be there if there's anyone who's interested. On August the 26th, we will have a Lawrence 55 COVID Task Force meeting at 9:00 a.m. If anyone's interested in being a part of the task force, please contact Dr. Jody Pinlin at jpinlin@lawrence55.org or at 984-3568. It was exciting to see all of the smiles of so many students and parents at our school supplies drive-through event that was held on August the 3rd. We distributed over 700 book bags containing school supplies. Ms. Wanda Knight and the Department of Student Nutrition also provided bags of fruit as well. There were approximately 35 volunteers, which included community administrators and staff who volunteered to work at the event. Thank you so much to all of the volunteers who helped make our supply drive event a success. We also had a wonderful turnout for the Countdown to Kindergarten event on August the 10th. The event was held on the square in Lawrence, and the weather cooperated very well. We had a total of 151 kindergarten students who attended, along with at least one parent or adult, and many of them had both parents and multiple family members, including siblings as well. So we were very excited about the opportunity to serve our kindergarten students. We had 23 K students, 73 4K students, and 58 5K students attend. So thank you to all of our community volunteers and our school and district staff who volunteered their time and efforts to make this event a success. I appreciate all of the hard work from Ms. Abercrombie and our entire teaching and learning department as well for making this event happen. We do have a school holiday coming up. The school district will be closed on Monday, September the 6th for Labor Day. A virtual town hall meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September the 14th, to hear from community and school district leaders about the pending growth in the area and how it might impact the district. If you have specific questions, please submit them in advance to community underscore talk at lawrence55.org. Again, that's community underscore talk at lawrence55.org. Our district leaders will also be hosting the first launch and learn coming up next month, and a series of informational sessions that will be scheduled throughout the year with key stakeholder groups in our community. Our first session welcomes area real estate agents for an opportunity to engage and dialogue about our school district and our unique programs that set our district apart from others in our area. Additional sessions will be scheduled with representatives from our civic and faith community, as well as government leaders. We are so excited about all of the opportunities ahead as we continue to empower and inspire all to be educated and informed. And I am happy to answer any questions about that part of the report.
I have one question and then just one comment. On the, the mobile clinics that you're going to have set up, would you be able to post that on social media and get the word out to the community for anybody that wants to come to the games to participate in that?
Yes.
Okay. And then I really think you should wear your boxing outfit at least once a week to the DO. Thank you.
Six.
I had a couple, too. With so many admins, I think I know the answer. What are you doing to help support those folks that are in the new role? I think you and I talked about this already, but I wanted you to share that.
Yeah, so each principal, assistant principal. Yeah, so each, um, principal, assistant principal are assigned mentors. And so they do have mentors that will work with them and check on them. We also have district staff that, um, go out to the schools to check on the different schools, um, each week. So we do have a plan in place as, as well as individual conferences and working with them as well. Our, um, first-year principal will also be able to intend, um, principal induction through the state. So that is also another avenue of support as well.
Yeah, I thought I knew some of those, but I wanted to give you a chance to share them. The other one question I had was on the Emergency Broadband, EBB. Is that only during the virus time, or is it open and did it keep going?
I think at this point, and, uh, Mr. Finley, you can help if it's different, that at this point it is to support or in response to COVID-nineteen. Um, do you have additional information?
He said it's available until funds run out.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Um, I think you're still up next, though.
Yes, okay, so, um, per a license agreement dated May twenty-first, two thousand seven, between Lawrence County School District Fifty-Five and the Town of Greycourt, the town was granted the use of the former Pleasant View School buildings and property. The term of the license is listed as perpetual until such time as either party shall notify the other of the termination. The agreement states licensee may permit other human service agencies such as DSS, DHEC, Senior Auctions, Department of Mental Health, to use a portion of the property. The Town of Greycourt has been approached by the South Carolina Empowerment Center asking to lease the classroom portion of the facility for an initial two-year term. Since the South Carolina Empowerment Center is not one of the agencies listed in the agreement, the Town of Greycourt needs school district approval, school board approval, to enter into the requested two-year lease. So this would require board action.
Um, Dr. Thomas has presented to us this, uh, this opportunity to permit the Town of Greycourt to lease a portion of the building. Um, so do we have a motion in front of us to do that?
Um, first, what exactly is the empowerment center for? What, what do they do?
I don't have that information right now, but I can definitely, um, get that information and get it to you.
Okay. If you will, I, I looked it up because I had the same question. Uh, the way I understand it is an after-school program for, uh, local kids. Their focus will be local town, um, children and students. And so at least it's a kind of supplement.
Is that gonna be, do you, and you may not know, do you think that means it'll be localized just to Greycourt?
It says it's open to wider than that, but they specifically say they will focus on town students. I did have a couple of other questions on this before, you know, I don't know if we wanna bring the motion up, then discuss it, but...
Uh, I think we can handle it.
Okay.
We can go either way. If you've got more questions, um...
I had a few concerns with this. One, I didn't understand the lease agreement with the school and, uh, the Town of Greycourt, because I didn't have that copy in front of me. I'm a little reluctant to approve anything without seeing that part of the agreement, too. It just, I'm only getting kind of part of the story. And even in this, it's not, the school district's not named in here, so it's a little confusing as while we were reviewing it. And then it was missing Exhibit A on here that they referenced. And again, a kind of pi- bits and pieces of information, so... And then the lease term is actually dated here for July first this past year, so it would be in arrears. I, I've got some concerns. I'd like to table this and get the, the whole picture and then agree to it.
They've actually been using it already.
Yeah, that's what I'm afraid of. Yeah.
It's been a good thing for the community up there, and I guess others could go, depending on, you know, transportation or what have you. But it's been real good and very resourceful for food distribution and everything, so it's kind of been a little...
I think, I think the only thing Todd's concerned about is the break of the original lease that we've got with the Town of Greycourt.
Yeah, I mean, if we're gonna follow the rules and follow the lease, we're not at the moment. And, and this is only a part of a picture, so... I, I would have an issue approving this as it stands and as it was presented.
But it sounds like we're breaking the lease anyway if Ms. Ware says they're already using the space.
They're already using it.
I'm not aware of it, so...
Well, I mean, over things have gone on there, you know, as such, with students and just like I said...
Oh, you mean other things have been hap- not this?
And I'm not sure if it's the empowerment, you know, I wasn't sure exactly, and then I looked it up.
Sorry.
Not good things going on, but yeah. Program, and I'm not familiar with it either, so I wasn't sure if that was coming under the town. And that's how I understood it to be when I read that, like it's coming under the town, I'm pretty sure, so...
That's, I think the purpose of this is because they were not on the original lease agreement as approved, uh, entities to come in and use them.
With the wide, all the...
That's correct.
So that, I'll make that motion to table this issue until we get a full picture. This is what I would submit.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Okay, if there's not a second, then we will proceed to see if there, does anyone want to make a motion to proceed as Dr. Thomas has, um, asked or requested.
Yeah, I'll make a mo- I'll make a motion to, uh, approve a request permitting the Town of Greycourt to lease a portion of the Pleasant View Building to the South Carolina Improvement Center, Empowerment Center.
Okay, Mr., uh...
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Carpenter made a motion, Mr. Patterson second. Do we have any further discussion on it? Um, the only thing that I would add is that, um, I guess I'm, I'd be comfortable moving forward because, I know you and I briefly talked about this, but if this is a, it's an adjustment to the lease, it's adjustment to what the Town of Greycourt can do, but doesn't adjust between the school district and the Town of Greycourt. Is that correct?
Yeah, so this would allow them to be able to allow the empowerment center to utilize, um, the classroom portion of the facility.
So we're basically just saying, okay, we'll add one more word to our original lease to allow them to sublease to someone else?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, um, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion to approve, um, the permit for the Town of Greycourt to lease the portion of the Pleasant View Building, um, all those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. The motion passes. Uh, and now we have Ms. Jennifer Abercrombie.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am here tonight just to present in accordance with the State Board of Education Regulations forty-three dash two thirty-four, um, and I'm requesting the Board of Trustees' approval for the thirty-eight courses in your board packet for the Lawrence District Fifty-Five High School twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. And this will require board action.
May we ask a question or two? Are any of these classes new? Are these already in place?
No, um, all of them are already in place except if you turn to the last page. The scientific research, non-lab class, that will be a new addition for seniors, for twelfth graders. Um, but the rest are all courses that you approved for this school year, previous school year.
Okay.
I'm on a roll tonight, I guess. Um, I actually had a chance to really dig through these a little bit. I noticed that there's a couple of classes where you go, you know, Color Guard one, two, three, four, and several examples of that. I really like the way the journalism goes where they show an increasing responsibility from two to three to four.
Right.
Whereas Color Guard and, uh, I think, uh, Wind, Recusant, and... They're just rubber stamps, one to the next and the next. And I, if you take it four years in a row, you ought to have an increasing level, um, of responsibility or learning or something, not just doing the same thing again.
Right. And so these are courses, so the, the school board approves, or I'm sorry, the state board has courses that they've already approved. So these would be in addition to those. The courses that are listed here are not approved by the State Board of Education. So that is requiring your board approval. So these are the options that we have in addition to that.
Guess what I'm still, I'm still saying is it, it gets on, it grates me a little bit because we've, we've got, for instance, Color Guard one, two, three, and four with the exact same description on all four of those. I'm picking on those because that's the personal.
Oh, I see what you're saying, with the description part. And, well, within those courses, they vary. It's not the same. And then it also, um, the state board only approves, because we're block scheduling, we have to have those in addition because we offer two semesters that are separate. So, but you're saying the description is the same for...
It ought to show an increasing or in, you know, harder and harder and harder each time.
Right.
I'd even question, you know, you said you needed four of them, but then the ROTC has one description. And I know students take that over and over again. So those two things don't have the, are not treated the same here. So I, I question why that.
And that's just the way that it is with the description of the courses that we receive? I will defer. Dr. Pinlin, do you have any more information?
Not trying to be difficult here, sorry.
One, one thing with the, um, Navy Junior, AB Junior ROTC, um, they already have seven other courses listed at the state yet.
Okay.
And so that's why there's not...
There's only one.
That's why we only had to add one more. Um, some of the ones that you see that have a lot more explanation, there is a college weight and an honors weight, so the school has to be very direct in distinguishing between those. Whenever you go to Color Guard one, two, three, four, those are elective classes that, um, those kids will get in second and continue to play with. I understand what you're saying. If I've been in Color Guard four years, I should be, um, at a different level than I thought those... Um, and we'll, we'll make mention of that in the high school, but in the future, I need to increase their...
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Any other questions, Karen? Okay. All right, so Ms. Abercrombie has put before us, uh, the classes. So, uh, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the thirty-eight courses, um, as requested by Ms. Abercrombie?
I'll make a motion to approve the thirty-eight courses as requested for school year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Um, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve the thirty-eight courses as requested for school year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three? All those in favor? That's unanimous? So the motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Abercrombie. Uh, and now we have, uh, Dr. Brink.
Good evening. How are y'all?
Good evening.
I'm sorry. I'm not as tall as those who have preceded me. Um, tonight I want to give you just a little quick update on the strategic plan and our accreditation process that we're going through. Um, we have a couple of different strategic plans, and, and Dr. Thomas asked me to sort of give you an update and sort of show you how they, they converge with each other. Um, some of you are, um, were here when we, we did an outside, we had some outside consulting. And so I, I'm a very visual learner, so a Venn diagram was, was the best way that I could show you. And I know there's a lot of writing on this. Um, but in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, we, we partnered with an outside, um, organization to do a little bit of digging and some work in, in getting, um, surveys and having focus groups and, and doing some digging to come up with a, a strategic outline. And, and you'll see that as the Strategic Plan two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-three. And, and in that strategic plan, um, that, that involved a new mission statement, a new vision statement, new guiding principles, and out of that came, um, five focus areas, okay? Um, an instructional focus, staff development, facilities, family and community engagement, and fiscal responsibility. So you'll see when we talk about strategic plan, there's a couple of different variables going on. But, but all of these are, are great working and guiding documents, um, that we use at the district level. On the other side, in the yellow side, we also have at the state level our district strategic renewal, um, that we do, we update yearly. Um, and so we update it yearly, but every five years we renew it. And so our last renewal was two thousand and twenty, two thousand, so we now will go from two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-five. And at the end of each school year, every school and the district updates its State Department Strategic Plan. And where these two plans converge, um, is in the instructional, staff development, community involvement piece, okay? And so that's where you see where both of them, both of them have goals, objectives, and action plans. And what we have done over this last year is we have taken the information from the Strategic Plan two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-three, the instructional, the staff development, and the community engagement. And as we updated that State Department plan, we converged those together, okay? And so our State Department plan really puts that academic and achievement and survey, the State Department survey data, puts those real numbers and, and puts that and makes that measurable, okay? Um, and it attaches data to it that we measure yearly. And so that's where those two converge. So we will continue to use both documents. We will use mostly the, the State Department when we talk about instruction, staff development, and community involvement, because now we have, uh, concrete data. We use State Department stakeholder surveys. We also use our student achievement data, which you mentioned we do have a gap in last year. But we don't, we don't have a gap in the formative data from students, uh, their math tests, the things we have. But yes, we do have a, a gap in State Department data. Um, we have the new data. It is still embargoed until the report cards come out. But we, I can give you an update on that when, when the time comes. Um, and then we'll continue to use that other strategic plan for the facilities and the fiscal responsibility part that isn't covered in the State Department Strategic Plan. So it continues to be a working document, um, in, in that respect. And so I, I work with all of the schools at the end of every school year to update their, their strategic plan based on what has gone on in their schools. And then we will do another up, update again in October. Now that they have all of their data, they'll be able to input their data to see where they're trending over that five-year. Um, and so what the State Department asked us to do in two thousand twenty was to project out in two thousand twenty-five where we saw ourselves in math, in ELA, in our survey data with our parents, in our stakeholders, our teachers, our students, uh, where we hoped to be. And so we, we met, we, and we increased those incrementally, and, and that's where we set our goals. So that's, that's where we are right now with our strategic plan. So our next step, you've got, you've got where you see my little people are putting their puzzles together. So, um, that's what we do with our, we have a lot of plans. You know, we're, we're, ask all our principals, we have multiple plans that we turn in. So at the, at the school level, just know that, yes, we do have two strategic plans, but they are working, uh, parallel to each other, and they work in concert with each other. So we'll continue to use that two thousand nineteen, twenty-three plan to maintain that vision, that mission, and those guiding principles that you'll also see on the State Department plan. And we'll continue to use that nineteen twenty-three document for, for facilities and a little bit for family and community engagement, also for, for fiscal responsibility. The next thing, and that leads us just beautifully into what does that mean for next steps? Actively engaging in a continuous improvement cycle. I'm gonna pause right there before I go into accreditation to see if anybody has any questions about strategic plan, plans, because this is kind of plural at this point, before I move into a, a brief accreditation update.
Does it take more effort to run those two parallel plans, or would you be better served by trying to consolidate?
Well, it was, we, we got a, a lot of really good feedback when we did our two thousand nineteen, twenty-three with all of that focus group. We got a lot of good stakeholder feedback there. And so that really helped, it, it really did help and was a great jumping off point. A lot of times districts don't have that, kind of in an intermediary period. Um, and all we have is the State Department stakeholder survey data. So it was good to try to have that to mesh. And it's also good to have the facilities and the fiscal responsibility that isn't covered in the State Department. So it took a little bit of effort to do this with them, but, but it's good to have both.
And I would also like to add that the two thousand nineteen, um, twenty, twenty-three plan was approved by the board. So that is a, a board-approved plan.
Any other questions there? Wonderful. So with accreditation, and that goes with that continuous improvement cycle as well. With our accreditation, this is just an update of a timeline I shared with you back in the spring. Um, of course, in the spring we started, I got your approval to go through accreditation with Cognia. We began our, um, continuous improvement team meetings. And in the summer, we, I have worked with district leadership, with school leadership, um, to, you know, we did that revision of the strategic plan. We've done evidence collection and preparing for our accreditation review. This fall, we have continued to do that. We are kind of in the throes of it right now, um, and, and finalizing, getting ready for our accreditation review. We will have our virtual accreditation visit, October the fourth through the sixth. Some of you all will be involved in that. And so we'll be getting the information to you. As a matter of fact, Dr. Thomas and I have a meeting with our, um, evaluation lead tomorrow to find out a little bit more information. And then throughout the year, we'll just continue to follow up on the information that they present us. So this just gives you a little bit of an outline about the visit. That's a three-day visit. October the fourth will be our district presentation where Dr. Thomas and district leadership will be able to, be able to give them a good, a good picture of what the district looks like. Um, October the fifth, a lot, excuse me, and there will be some school leadership focus groups at that time as well. October the fifth is where most of that day will be consumed with the focus groups of the, that's a four-person team, including district governance, and that is you all, um, parents and community members, teachers and staff and students. And we'll pull a good bit of this from our continuous improvement teams that met in the spring of last year. We had a lot of, of great members of our community and our parents and our teachers involved in there. And so, um, I'm looking forward to that. And then October the sixth, our team will meet a good bit, but we'll also have some conclusions from them and a little bit of information that they share with us. As far as the accreditation, excuse me, portion, they will give us a written report of the accreditation review within thirty business days. Um, the Cognia Global Commission meets four times a year. And so they can't, they won't confer accreditation on us October the sixth. We'll get our report. But officially, the next Global Commission, they meet quarterly, um, is when they, is when they do that every time. And then after accreditation, we will continue to review and share those findings. As a matter of fact, I, when I met with principals, um, over the last week, I've, I've told them to keep their rating sheets with them because they'll use them as part of their strategic renewal. So that kind of goes back to that continuous improvement process where they've rated themselves in, in areas of leadership and learning and resources. And that's where they go back and they tie them back into things. And so it is a process. It is an outside process, but, but that's how you tie it back into the things that they're doing in their buildings and at the district level. Any questions about accreditation?
Dr. Brink, would you mind sharing your slides with us on an email?
Sure, I'd be glad to.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Dr. Brink. Dr. Penland?
Good evening. Um, in your pocket, you will find, um, the update for ESER three that I'll be sharing. The ESER three plan is part of the American Rescue, um, plan for, um, the funding that we received from the feds. This is the second, third round of ESER funding. We received CARES funding, which was around one point nine million. ESER two, um, which was six point nine million. And ESER three, as part of the American Recovery Plan, is fifteen point five million. So what I have provided for you is the plan that we have finalized, um, for ESER three. And in your board, um, updates that you've been receiving the past few weeks, you've received some information about the types of activities that we were going to be providing in that, um, or in our plan. So as we go forward through, um, the, the American Rescue Plan, you can see through there the activities that we included and the funding that we tied to each one of these. I'm just going to highlight some of these, um, sections as we go through. As part of the American Rescue Plan, we had to provide at least twenty percent or put twenty percent at least into academic recovery. That would have put us at three point one million focused on academic recovery. We have actually budgeted in that top section, section, four point four million. And those activities include academic recovery, um, that we've been running through also ESER two, which is our after-school program tutoring, um, that is in conjunction with our, or in addition to our Twenty-First Century Programs. That also serves the high school, which has been something that we have not been able to do in the past with some tutoring for pretty much any subject area throughout the high school, including KATE courses. We also have, um, put in here academic recovery interventionists, and that would have been six FTEs, full-time employees, for three years. Academic recovery supplies to support those, um, people in those jobs. Also, um, some MTSS, which is Multi-Tierred System of Support Coaches, um, three of those for three years. And also, um, our Director of Academic Recovery, um, in those programs. So that is how we're addressing the academic, um, recovery and academic loss as part of our, um, ESER three, um, funding. We also could provide, and we've kind of talked about the fifteen buckets that are tied to ESER, and I mean, ESER in the past. So one of those buckets that I'm will highlight is also one that, um, allows us to do some special ed, KATE, and Perkins-type, um, um, funding. So we can utilize any of this money to kind of address those same types of activities. We are going to include a KATE program for EMS and fire management, um, which will purchase a mobile ambulance and, um, provide, um, EMT certification, um, which will prepare them for paramedic, um, certification through PMAT tech. So this kind of gets them on the track that would let them leave the high school with an EMT certification. Also pharmacy tech will be included in this. We're, um, looking at expanding some special ed course offerings at the high school to, um, do an expansive print shop and offer work-based learning opportunities for students. We're looking for, um, to include, um, family literacy, um, services. One of the activities that was also suggested in our survey that we, um, completed was also build classroom libraries, um, to provide more books and services, um, in our classrooms. So we also included media center supplies and classroom libraries there, um, for some of that funding. Couple of the buckets we did not a lot, um, funding for because we either thought that that was, um, funding that we weren't really needed to, um, we don't need money to collaborate with DEHEC and our local agencies. So we did not put money, um, in those buckets, but we did kind of, um, provide what we're doing in those sections. Activities to address the needs, unique needs of low-income students, children with disabilities, English learners, minorities, and, um, our different subgroups like that. We really wanted to focus on, um, activities that, um, some subgroups don't have. So a lot of times, um, kids in some of those, um, at-risk poverty groups or at-risk groups don't have, um, extensions, I mean, access to enrichments. So we have, um, allocated two percent of our allocation to the arts, looking at fine art activities and also kind of enrichment activities that we'll be doing, um, through Artisan Residence and, um, different activities and summer, um, art programs as well, um, through there. So we did want to focus, um, some money toward, um, enrichment as well as, um, the summer loss, or the learning loss that we're doing. Couple of other things, um, I'm not going to go through all these. Um, one of the other, I mean, our survey really, um, kind of, and I'm going to kind of highlight some of the survey results. They're really focused on community partnerships, mentors, support, relationships, raises for teachers, which is one thing we couldn't put in here. Um, after-school clubs, mental health was a, was really, really focused on whenever we looked at our surveys, facility upgrades, um, class size, learning loss, um, and tutoring, technology, family literacy, parenting program, ESOL support, STEM math and science extensions, and athletics. Athletics is another one that we could not put into here. But also, um, there was a, um, focus on communication and being able to provide kind of timely information and also being able to, um, provide updates. So, um, in there you can see that, um, a communications coordinator was included. We have also, um, embedded in number six also additional cleaning supplies and, um, PPE for, um, future need. We had originally left that blank, but then with the spike in the last few days, um, or last few weeks, we did go ahead and put a little bit of funding back in there as we, um, kind of go through the next piece. And then at the bottom of the page, we're talking about planning coordinating for long-term closures. This is looking at how we're prepared for e-learning, virtual learning, um, and anything that we had to do. So you can see one point five million, um, put there to contract services for tools for online virtual learning. And that's, whenever you look at this money, this would be to cover us for contracts for three years, um, as we go forward. Purchasing educational technology, we put, um, almost a million in it to, um, continue upgrading our devices that we give to students and teachers, administrators, um, also the mental health services there. You can see we put, um, right at half a million dollars for SEL, mental health. That is also partnered with our ESER two funds, where we have another three hundred thousand dollars there. And that is providing additional mental health counselors. Um, and you can go down through there. Section twelve is talking about additional classroom space. We've, um, budgeted four million there, um, for some additional, um, space. I think we have mentioned that as part of the Sanders Project and also any additional space that we can get out of that as we go forward. And, uh, air quality, another almost million there. And then the last bucket is basically we've budgeted some money for loss revenue, um, decreased enrollment or funding that we may lose due to COVID, um, that we can try to recoup that. And we're also allowed to charge back indirect costs, which is cost to, um, manage and kind of implement the grant. So that basically budgets our fifteen point five million. Questions that you may have about our ESER three update?
Uh, Dr. Penland, I have a couple of questions. Um, one, there's some, several areas that specifically says that this amount of money is for X number of years. The areas where you talk about the KATE program and the pharmacy tech, those areas, if there's a number there that says how many years that is, I don't, I, I haven't run across.
A lot of that is startup costs.
Is that just one-time fees?
Right. And so it's, I'm just kind of managing that. Whenever you have people, you typically kind of provide that for three years of services. But a lot of that was, but all of the money is allowed for us to use for three years. It all expires in twenty twenty-four. So we have the funding there. So we budgeted, we didn't use the whole hundred thousand dollars for that section. It would just kind of roll to the next school year and then continue to purchase supplies or anything like that for those programs.
And do you have, even though this is what you've, this is what you've put in the budget, um, to how, on how to spend these funds? If you see that we're not going to spend X number of dollars in this area, are you free to move that to other areas?
Yes, ma'am. We can make amendments. And they're pretty quick with, I'm swapping that back and forth.
Thank you.
And we can amend up until twenty twenty-four, so.
The federal, federal law says that money can't be used on athletics?
That is correct. Um, it can be, it can support, um, courses that, um, help athletic, you know, so like if it was helping a wrestling, um, PE class or for a PE class for anything like that. So it has to be tied to the academics, um, to support anything that would appear athletic. So just to kind of go do something for the football field or something for one of our fields. For example, in ESER two, we tried to write in whenever baseball, we were trying to split, um, our C-team with our other team and kind of upgrade Call Your Park to be able to move those two teams and split that. Those were unallowable, um, expenses that we tried to, um, kind of upgrade some kind of athletic fields.
But like I was looking, uh, bucket, uh, ten or twelve, one of them says something about air quality. I know there's some issues with, uh, HVAC in locker rooms and.
That would still be tied, and that is still tied to, um, academics because those locker rooms are used for PE.
Well, that was my question. If it was multi-use.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Um, that is how we're, um, kind of addressing those needs for air quality. One of the things that they did approve in ESER two was kind of doing some flooring repairs that would be causing some air quality issues. And that was in, um, one of our, um, PE utilized areas also.
Okay, cool. Very good.
Got a couple, maybe got a couple. The first one, what is, what's going to be the role of the interventionists? Or do you not?
Interventionists are, um, very similar to what we already have in the buildings.
Okay.
We have, um, academic interventionists in all of our elementary schools, um, where they are able to pull kids, do one-on-one, small group instruction. They look and, um, our principals kind of group those kids, identify those kids that are in need, and they work with those. Um, our, most of our elementary schools focus on K one, two. You know, those are, um, also some areas that we would be able to expand that. And we currently don't have any interventionists in the middle schools or at the high school. And so that's kind of where our goal was targeting, um, based on the applicants that we get is truly trying to serve more of our middle high schools to be able to pull and do small groups because we have not had that in several years. We used to have what were called power, what were they, powers? Power reading teachers or something like that, but they would come out and do that same type of small group. And that was part of the grant.
Are those specially certified individuals?
They are, um, specially qualified. Um, they may not have a specific certification, but they would have to have their reading, um, teacher-type endorsement. Um, and I'm looking to see if anybody else wants to jump in.
They would actually receive specialized training.
Training.
So there will be specific training that will be provided to make sure that they have the skills necessary to perform the duties of the academic recovery interventionist.
Now, is that, those, those six positions, is that, are those six full-time positions?
Those will be six full-time positions for the length of the grant.
Three years, yeah.
They would not be, um, contracted. So they would have to understand that they were being hired as part of a grant that would not be necessarily continued after three years from now.
Okay.
So it would not be a necessarily automatic add to the budget whenever this grant ran out.
Before you leave that one, and I think where maybe your, your math, I did the same thing. This is an all-in rate, right?
This is all-in rate. This will be salaries, benefits, and supplies and travel for them.
So that's.
Yeah, so don't just divide, yeah, yeah, that.
It's not.
And whenever you start budgeting benefits, um, we've got to do twenty, um, eight to twenty-nine percent for just FICA and retirement. That does not include insurance. So whenever you throw, that ends up being about thirty-five to forty percent of a teacher's salary.
That's where I was going with it.
Yeah, I did the same thing. Down below, you, you list it as salary benefits and et cetera.
Right.
Here you don't.
Yeah, but it's.
And, and the only reason I was asking, and, and where I was leading into this was for the academic recovery salaries and benefits for the eighty teachers. That thirty-two weeks, is that thirty-two weeks over the three-year period, or is that thirty-two weeks per year?
We have two years already written in ESER two. This is one year for ESER three, which would be year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay.
Because we already had the same type of activity in ESER two.
Would our mental health counselors be hours exclusively?
They are hours exclusively. We hired our own. We are also still partner with Beckman, uh, Mental Health, who also provides, um, some services. But, um, we have right now five full-time that only serve our schools.
Okay. I was just, I was working some numbers.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Trying to figure out what was, what was what?
It's all included.
Last one, I guess, for, for me at least. The item twelve, most of that four million, is that Sanders is where you've got it earmarked?
Um, that is, um, partly Sanders. And, um, if we have anything left over, it would be additional classroom spaces needed. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Penland. Now we move into board actions. And there's a few things listed here. I had approached or contacted Dr. Thomas about adding in the Juneteenth holiday to our calendar, since it was now a, um, federal holiday. However, I didn't want to make any kind of knee-jerk change without knowing how it would impact, um, the staff and their calendar during the year. I know this is during the summer months, and so it's a limited number of staff and students. But, Dr. Penland, could you share if that would be something that we could do and it would be workable?
I'm sure if we, if you want us to go forward and bring a board policy, revised policy back to you, um, for vacation time, that would be, um, something you need to consider about including as a paid vacation day. So it would not change the number of days that the, um, person would be employed, but it would be one of those two-hundred-and-twenty, two-hundred-and-thirty, two-hundred-and-forty-day employees that would be one of those days that they would not have to work, but they would be a paid holiday for. that would be one of those days that they would not have to work, but they would be a paid holiday for. It would be, then you would also need to consider what groups of workers, you know, we have 190s. Most of our teachers will be done by then, you know, based on calendaring. And then what does that look like if that falls on a weekend? So we would need to make sure that we included that, that would be the Friday, I mean, the Thursday before, since it would be there in the summer, or the Monday after if it fell on the weekend, to be determined based on that year. Because I think in the next two years, it's on a Saturday and Sunday.
I think when I was doing some reading on it for the, being a federal holiday, that they kind of moved it to Monday. But I know employers can kind of shift and move over how they choose to do that. It's something that I would like to see happen, but I just want to make sure that whatever transpires works within, you know, within your schedule. And we're not telling someone, okay, you can have this as a holiday, but now you've got to work an extra day on the end of your contract kind of thing.
Then make it, I mean, 231 days, and they're really getting one more day off. It's just shifting a day of work. It would be, I think if we wrote it correctly in the policy, it would be the paid vacation day. So that would count as one of their contracted or days that they were employed.
Is that something that we would need to take board action on tonight for you to do that? Or would you present us with a plan?
Your action would come after we presented the actual policy.
Okay.
And whenever we're looking at that, we have had a discussion about how that would affect whenever it falls in the middle of a week for summer school and that kind of stuff. But we'd work with that in a couple of years, several years from now.
Is that, now, now this policy for, for vacations and holidays, is each individual federal holiday, did it have to be approved to be added to a list of holidays? Or is there, the only thing I don't want to get into is an umbrella of federal holidays. And now that it's been noted as a federal holiday, that if the policy states that teachers and staffers see federal holidays off, that we're not.
I think it would just be the addition of that one day to the list of days that they were.
That are already there.
I think, I think the list is already, I think there's a specific days already listed in the policy. Yes, they're already, they're already specifically lined up.
And G D D, Support Staff Vacations and Holidays, there is a list that includes New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Day, Independence Labor Day, general election for those even numbered years, Thanksgiving Day, Christmas, and those are the ones that are listed right now in this policy.
And I think tonight, if we could, if there could be, if you all wanting to move forward, a motion to approve the addition, then that would be that motion, and then we would come back and present it.
Okay.
And two, we need to look at, for a, the 210s positions, you know, really work closer to the edge of the school years. So we'd need to decide if that's going to be for our 220s, 230s, 240s. And we can kind of go back and look to see how calendars fall out and come back with a recommendation after we have a little bit more time to kind of look at that and kind of hash it out on a calendar. But my gut feeling doesn't include 210s, but 220s maybe, but definitely the 230s and 240s.
Yeah, I just didn't want it to add an extra day to someone's year.
And hourly employees, I want to make sure that we include them too.
Yeah, because I would think that.
Yes, ma'am. Right. The, our custodians and people that are working during the summer.
Thank you.
So we'd need a motion.
Okay, so if we could get a motion to approve the addition of this district holiday, and then after the fact, Dr. Penlon will bring back the revised policy for us to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the addition of Juneteenth as a district holiday, with Dr. Penlon following up.
Thank you, Mr. Roderick. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. All those in favor of the motion to approve the addition of Juneteenth as a district holiday, raise your hand. That's unanimous. Thank you, so the motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Penlon.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is about Family Promise of Lawrence County. And I just brought a little information to read. I think I see Ms. Peggy Nats out there, but I'm not sure if my glasses are telling me right. Family Promise is a Lawrence County, Family Promise of Lawrence County is a nonprofit organization, which is helping, which is helping our own student base. Their mission is to help families experiencing homelessness and low-income families achieve sustainable independence through community-based response. They are hosting a golfing fundraiser on October 1st at Lakeside Country Club. A team of four, which includes a whole sponsor, is $500. And what I am bringing to you tonight is asking that we sponsor this event with unused board travel funds. Dr. Thomas has confirmed that the funds are available if, if we so choose to do this, and that it would allow two board members and two district staff to make up the team. So we're able to give back to the community and give back to Family Promise as they're trying to raise funds. I know it's been very difficult during COVID because they haven't been able to run as they were set up to run. So they're trying to get back into fundraising and building their base back up. So if that is something that you guys would entertain.
So this is a, this is a sponsorship to Family Promise for the golf tournament, but it also gives the district a spot in the tournament? Is that what you?
Yes, so it would have, so the whole sponsor basically means that the district, the school district would have one of their yard stands or yard signs at that hole saying Lawrence County District 55 sponsored this hole. Then it would also include four people. And whether it be board or employees, that doesn't really matter to me. It won't be me, I'm not going to be playing golf. But I just thought it would be a good idea, a good way for us to, to help Family Promise.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the 500.
I know, I have a problem with taking tax funding during this. For the simple fact, what's going to happen when the next guy comes up and asks for the same money? You know, I would rather the board itself, and we have done that in the past, we split the $500 up a pay.
And I'm, I'm happy to do that as well. The only reason I mentioned board funds was so it could be a district sponsorship versus the board and that, and that I thought because we haven't been able to travel or do anything with COVID, that I knew there were funds sitting there. I, I'm happy to do it either way. I would just like for us as a team to be able to support Family Promise. But I do understand your point, Anthony.
Okay, well, as long as we can make that distinction, that we was using some funds that were left over. Because I would hate to see people coming in here a month after a month requesting money, saying that we needed somebody.
Especially taxpayers.
And I don't want to set a bad precedent either. I just kind of thought it was a good idea since we had money sitting there.
Organizations that were needed, you know, such as, I know, people have grown older and live in a more your home, especially now, so I'm just thinking, you know, there are others that could come forward and possibly do that.
Well, I mean, this, this is an unusual circumstance because we have the money left over to do it because we hadn't been able to travel. So I can see it in that scenario.
I don't know, what, do you have any thoughts on it, Dr. Thomas, from a district perspective?
You know, I definitely want to support Family Promise, and so I'm in favor of that. I understand the point as far as if there's another organization that, you know, may not be the same type of help to the community or, you know, that, that any organization could come and request sponsorship as well. So I do see that as far as it being a board of action item. But, you know, I don't have a problem with it either way from a district standpoint as far as the support.
This is, this just popped in my head. But with Anthony's concern of if we approve this, now we've opened the door in saying that number one, we're using taxpayer money to, to fund these places, which I would hope nobody would have issue with, with it being used that way. But could we do, could we do, let's say we do a district yard sale to raise the money for it, and then make the spot, make the donation from the, from that?
From something else.
From some type of district fundraiser that, that, you know, sets aside, then we get away from the taxpayer money.
Okay. Well, then maybe this is something, it's not until October 1st, and maybe we should take that, the lead from the two of you and go about it a different way to be able to provide the funds.
Is that, is that something that you think we could do as a district? Just come up with some type of community fundraiser, something? Just, just to create a, a fund for that, or stuff like that?
I think the only, and I, I don't, I don't mind a fundraiser, but the only thing with.
We would have to be willing to do that for.
Who's going to do it, yeah.
Whatever organization that might want sponsorship, so.
But, Ms. Wilson, do you have something?
Madam Chair, that, in my, in my mind, sitting here listening to you all, that, that may also be kind of the same, the same thing because you want to be fair to everyone, and we can't have a yard sale to help every organization in the community.
Right.
I mean, I might have enough junk in my building to do several, but.
Well, let's do this, then, I, I just know that Family Promise, I know that they've had families within their system that are our students. And so that's kind of what hit home for me is to be able to help. So let's table this, and then it's not until October 1st, and I'll see if I can get creative and come up with some other way that we can still, we can still. I, I don't want to get into like doing a fundraiser only because.
That's fine, that just popped in my head that, yeah, if we're trying to stay away from using taxpayer money.
Right, right.
$73 or something each, and you'd probably have $500 or something like that.
But I just hate, I hate for that to open the door and say, well, the, the board gave $500 to Family Promise.
Something we elected to do.
It is.
Yeah.
But somebody else, but then, and the next, but the next group's going to come in and ask for money as well. And then if we deny that one, they're going to say, oh, well, the board cares more about this than that as individuals. And that, that's what I don't want to open the door to.
Well, depending on what they're coming forth with, I would stand tall and proud and say that someone being homeless with a child is, I don't know that it gets more priority for me as far as helping, but.
I just think we, like you say, table it until we can clarify how, how we handle these situations.
I was just trying, I was just trying to do something nice. Just trying to help, just trying to help Family Promise, help the school district get their name out there. But at the very least, Family Promise is having a golf tournament on October 1st. And if you want to participate, contact them. All right, so how about that? Okay, so we'll move on, and Dr. Penlon, you're up again.
Good evening again. All right, so the next item on the agenda is the 2022 reopening plan update. We do have an addition of there, but I did want to give you an update on our COVID numbers as we have been sending y'all kind of updates throughout the past couple of days. You have a sheet also in your packet that's kind of green with some numbers on there, and they'll also be on the screen. Currently, we have 48 students positive, five staff positive, 192 students quarantined, 11 staff quarantined, for a total of 256 people out due to COVID-related contacts or illnesses. Also, active cases, you can see right here, breakdown through our schools. Couple of pieces of data on here. We did have a couple of middle school teams that have just come back to school. So those numbers are not reflected on here because now they are back in the building. This is actually people out as of now out of the building. So if they've come back, they come off this list. So this is an active list as of about 4:30 this afternoon. You can see that we have had some increased tics at a couple of our schools. Gray Court had several that they had to quarantine today. E B had a class over the weekend and some other exposures throughout. We do, let's see, trying to think, looking through these numbers, yeah. Most of these others are just kind of contacts. We have seen, you know, last year, whenever we had a lot of quarantined students, never showed up positive. We're going to be tracking that data. We don't have a lot of that data now because we're only in day five. But whenever we're looking at that, we have seen a few people swap over from quarantine to isolation. So we're not sure that the spread's going to be a little bit more to those quarantine individuals or not. We have seen that throughout our contact tracing, we've been able to waive a lot of people's quarantining due to their vaccination status. We have not had to vaccinate as many, I mean, have not had to quarantine as many staff as we possibly would have due to their having a vaccine. Part of the DEHEC regulations is that if you have a full, your full battery of vaccinations, you do not have to quarantine if you've been in close contact. You just have to keep a check on your symptoms for several days, and you're encouraged to test after three to five days, just to ensure that you don't have any breakthrough cases. So we are adhering to our DEHEC guidelines on that. The graph that you see on the back of your document starts September of last year. The blank is our summer, and these are the first five days of school. So if you'll look, that is actually August the 15th, I think, is the first date. That has numbers, and you can see how we've gone over the last four days and the weekend of our contacts. You will see that we are also at the highest number of positive cases that we have been at in the entire year and a half we've been tracking this. And we're just about meeting our max numbers of total individuals out of the building at one time. Very much hoping we kind of hit a plateau soon and start coming back down the other way. But we'll see how our numbers go as we kind of go forward. But I did want to provide you with that information as we kind of move forward in our reopening plan. All right, in the reopening plan that you have in your packet, there was only one change in this document.
Excuse me a second, Dr. I had one question about the COVID before we move on. If, if, if an employee comes into contact with somebody after quarantine, do they have to use sick days?
We are about to go into those policies in just a minute. And so as of now, because those policies have expired, they are getting coded as using their sick days. But based on a policy that we're going to, or administrative rule we're about to bring to you, we will discuss that as we go forward.
Okay, very good.
Being able to go back and reinstate those days and then kind of waive X number of days. Okay? So in the document that is the reopening plan, on page three, we did add one section that would adhere to our DEHEC guidance, which is stating, because right now our universal and correct wearing of masks, as masks are not required in the buildings or on buses. If so desired, students and staff will be allowed to wear masks based on CDC and SCDHEC guidelines. We are adding the section of face coverings may be required by students, staff, and visitors in healthcare areas of school facilities, locations designated for healthcare testing or for waiting pickup due to illness are considered healthcare facilities. Examples include health rooms, athletic trainer offices. As such, infection control policies and practices are held to healthcare facility standards, and expectations may differ from policies of non-healthcare school facilities. Individuals being assessed, tested, or dismissed from the attendance due to respiratory symptoms should be required to wear a face covering while in these designated healthcare areas and also when transitioning to and from. So we are adding that just so that we can ensure the safety of our other individuals in the building, that we don't spread the virus. So that would have gone against our no mask or required statement, and we want to include that so that we can keep people safe in that setting. So that would need board approval.
Dr. Penlon has presented us with information to change the. Uh, Dr. Penland has presented us, uh, with information to change the reopening plan. Um, would anybody like to make a motion?
This, um, clarification, if you want to call it, for it to be used in healthcare areas. That was a, that was sent out by the Department of Government Affairs regarding the proviso in the budget, correct? That the healthcare facilities.
Yes, yes.
So the proviso does not keep us from doing that, right?
Right.
I'll make a motion to approve the updated 2022 reopening plan as presented by Dr. Penland.
Thank you, Mr. Varner. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. All those in favor of approving the motion to approve the updated 2022 reopening plan as presented by Dr. Penland, um, raise your hand. So we have five, uh, four, all those opposed. You're abstaining. Okay. We've got five, four and two abstaining. Ms. Wilson, um, with that, the motion does pass. Thank you, Dr. Penland. Okay, up next is, um, a request that I received through kind of student council, but basically because I've involved. And I'll just read the information that they have shared with me and it's regarding changing our board meeting date for September twenty-seventh to move it to September twenty-eighth in order for the district to have the homecoming parade, um, the week of homecoming. And there's some logistics that have presented them from being able to have it any other day of the week. Um, but they did send me a letter right before I came. Um, Dr. Thomas, Chairman, Chairman Little and, uh, the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Board of Trustees, good evening. Lawrence District Fifty-Five High School Student Council would like to hold the homecoming parade on Monday, September twenty-seventh at six thirty. We are graciously asking the Board of Trustees to reschedule the board meeting, which is scheduled for Monday, September twenty-seventh at six thirty in order for all of our stakeholders to take part in some aspect of the parade. We understand that this is an inconvenience to all those involved in the board meeting. However, we have exhausted all other dates to host the parade. Beginning Tuesday, September twenty-eighth, there's a tennis match and a volleyball match. Wednesday brings church meetings and other sports matches and Thursday, there's a JV football game and another volleyball match. The Saturday before homecoming begins the, begins the band, excuse me, begins, the band is hosting the Henry Lawrence Invitational. Monday is the only date available when sports are not playing activities, but only practicing. After a year and a half of COVID, we would like for our students to get back to some normalcy by participating in the homecoming parade. Parade, we know that hosting the parade will help build school morale and bring back the Raider spirit we have missed seeing in the community. Your vote to reschedule the board meeting to a future date would be greatly appreciated. Thank you for your time and consideration, Brooke Yarber, LDHS Fifty-Five Student Council Advisor. Um, if you guys want to talk about this or ask any questions, I'll try to answer them. Or if everyone would, you know, if we want to make a motion to change the meeting to September twenty-eighth. I'm sorry, Anthony, I didn't hear you.
You say Ms. Yarber is their advisor.
Yes, and she's also helps with the JV volleyball.
Okay, now, when do we put our calendar out? So I mean, our, our calendar, it comes out way in advance of most of these things.
It does. The reason we put our calendar out, but all the sports put their own calendars out too. Um, so she's try, she was trying to coordinate between everything that's out there to pick the date. And October first is homecoming and that's why they're wanting to have the homecoming parade that week. And that's why they were asking if we could, because she, uh, she didn't mention this in the letter, but she actually wanted the board to judge the homecoming parade. Um, which was, she wanted us to be there instead of be here.
Could it be an earlier time?
An early, the reason she can't do it earlier because she has to wait on all the sports to finish their practices or else everybody won't be involved. What they're doing is the homecoming, each sport actually makes their own float. Um, and so for them to be able to, to do that and still practice, because none of their coaches are gonna allow them to not practice to, to participate.
Well, I, I mean personally, I, I would say for the spirit of homecoming, I would, I would go ahead for it this time. But I would, I would discourage them from having us moving the board members.
Absolutely. I understand. Absolutely. Um, will there be any more conversation?
So we wanted to do that just Tuesday evening instead of Monday evening. The board meeting, correct?
If that would be agreeable, if you guys need another night, I'm totally open to whatever you guys.
I'll make a motion that we change the September twenty-seventh meeting to the September twenty-eighth during Tuesday night.
I'll sec.
Thank you, Mr. Rawl. Thank you, Mr. Hughes. All those in favor of moving the meeting from September twenty-seventh to September twenty-eighth is unanimous. The motion passes. Our September board meeting will be September twenty-eighth. Thank you all. I appreciate that and I'm sure student council does.
Still?
Yes, ma'am. No change in the time. Okay, um, now we've got our policies and administrative rules, um, listed here. Dr. Penland, are you, were you gonna lead us through this or?
You have the, um, which I can. Um, the first one is the public participation in board meetings. Um, I think no discussion around the board meeting and public participation.
I, my thoughts on this one is that I really, and these are just all, uh, Lisa put a list at your desk of kind of all the related policies. And there really wasn't many policies, but there were more administrative rules related to COVID. But this particular one, uh, we originally suspended it, then we brought it back with some changes. Um, the only thing I would like to see on this policy is maybe keep everything as is through the end of this school year. But then make sure that it's up for discussion again before we start another school year. Um, Dr. Thomas, anyone else, if you have any thoughts on that particular policy to make any changes or adjustments to?
So this, this was changed specifically just for COVID nineteen issues of participation?
We suspended public, we suspended public participation at one point. And then we, um, write, uh, let's see, when was it? In October, um, the committee, which included Ms. Ware, um, and Mr. Hughes made some recommendations to make public participation possible, but make it safer.
So all you're suggesting is that we just keep it as is for this school year? And then depending on where we're at at the end of the school year with COVID and everything determines whether or not we revisit.
I just didn't want to make a change to the, and then never go back and talk about it. So I figure if we could put a date on it and then we could keep it on the calendar to revisit it, so.
Do you, do you know, do you know the last board meeting for this school year? Do you know what that date is?
Why are you challenging me like that? Um.
June, I can get the first part, June.
June.
June twenty-seventh.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Would be the last one. But now, of course, if you, if you want to put that timeline of this school year, but say if in January, COVID's gone, I mean, the board could always go back and.
Right, I just, I would say if we could just put it, and, and I don't even know if that requires any type of board action. Because I don't think there was any date associated with it originally.
There, there's not a date.
Okay, okay. Um, so that covers that one. And then, Dr. Penland, I'll let you walk us through any administrative.
The next, um, administrative rule that is, is actually included in your packet, um, that we put in your desk today, not in the, um, original one that came to you. Um, we went ahead and brought a administrative rule for, um, you to kind of view, you know, we, rules don't have to be approved by board. Um, but we want to make sure you're aware and you're good with it as we move forward. So the one that was kind of brought up earlier is the one that's related to, um, COVID leave and how that affects our, um, staff. We did have policies that were related, that related to COVID leave, um, remote work and some other things that expired June thirtieth. And so we wanted to bring those rules back up to you, um, for consideration and information as we, um, move forward. Um, we didn't think this was, um, a have-to-do immediately whenever we were looking at this one. Because we know that all of our employees were gonna be getting days and that we were meeting by today, that nobody would be docked pay prior to, um, their leave running out for today's meeting. So, um, it's not something that we just kind of sat on, but we knew that we'd have this opportunity to discuss that here. So, um, with, um, the COVID leave that we're, um, putting in front of you, we did put another year extension on the COVID leave. The only thing that has, um, been changed, um, from the prior year was that it initially, last year it stated, um, sick leave for a two-week period um, would be allowed for those teachers to utilize. It did not limit the number of times they could take the two-week period. Um, so this time, um, looking at what other districts are doing and kind of what's put out there. Um, we have put in there, a staff member is entitled to emergency paid sick leave for up to ten working days if the staff member is unable to work or telework due to any of the following. And so the six, um, the six sections are still there that were there last year. Um, we reviewed with Ms. Madden to see if there were any issues with anybody falling into any of those buckets that, um, were there. And we, if we approve it this way, this also kind of talks about the telework and also the remote work. So if they are able to remote work, whenever we get to that policy, they would not be using COVID leave. Because that would be considered a working from home, um, type. But we do have, um, several staff members that cannot work from home due to the type of job that they have. So this would be for those, um, staff, professional and support. There are two rules there that would, um, move forward, that would allow for, um, employees to use up to ten days as COVID leave. And that can be in any of those six, um, categories there.
Dr. Penland, will you please, um, clarify about going back to restore the, the days, um, that have been utilized?
So if we, like you've seen on our, um, graph, that we have several teachers that are already out, employees that are already out um, due to either COVID quarantine or COVID isolation. So any of those days that have been, um, already coded as absent for them, that would have gone against their sick leave. We would go back and work with the business office to restore those days and start utilizing these at the beginning of the school year.
Okay, thank you. And so we don't need to do anything on that particular.
For, I mean, if you have discussion, um, around that, we did, um, consider what other districts were doing around us. Um, Clennan's doing something a little bit different with a, um, leave bank that they, everybody could donate days to and then utilize from a bank. Um, Greenville's doing a ten-day, um, there's another district that's doing unlimited, um, number of days that they can take. So we kind of felt like the ten-day just, um, felt, um, kind of comfortable. Yes, ma'am.
Now, if they go over the ten days, what happens? Do they go into the, to their own leave?
Once they, um, everybody is, earns at least twelve sick days for the year.
Right.
Um, so then after their ten days, they would then start going into those, um, days that they have either, um, earned this year or that they've banked over the past several years.
The way that.
Right, so you can carry over up to ninety day, you can carry over up to ninety days. Yes, ma'am.
So you can only use your ten days one time? Is that the?
It's a, it's a one-time ten-day allotment, but it could be six days and four days if you got quarantined twice.
You couldn't say, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use one day a month for the ten months. That's not.
It would have to be they're out due to COVID. They would have to be out due to a.
At the positive test?
Positive test or quarantine due to a close contact.
Got you, got you.
Yes, sir. So typically if they're out due to one of those things, they are out for ten calendar days. Um, or we have the kind of the early return that DEHEC allows us if they do a negative test after day seven, that they can return after.
Dr. Penland, do we have, do we offer in the district the ability for employees to be able to give their sick days to other employees?
Um, what we have, um, and it is called, I'm looking for Renee, what's it called?
Sick leave, a shared sick leave bank.
Shared sick leave. And there is a protocol that once they have exhausted all of their days and they have been out for consecutive number of days, so it's for like long-term illnesses, um, or if they're taking care of somebody. That they can then do an application to, um, HR. And then once it goes to a, they have a three to four-member team that approves each individual request. Um, once that's approved, then HR will send that out and say, if anybody is willing to give, um, you can give to this day. So then you give after it's been approved. And so I might say, I want to give two days, I might want to give a day. And they compile those days to serve, those days to those individuals that have met the requirements for them.
Anonymous, you don't know who's.
Yeah, we don't have a clue. We can't say, Joe Penland needs twenty days, anybody want to give you one. Um, it's just.
That's good. That's good.
Um, so that is, um, the COVID leave. And then you get to the remote work, um, which is EBCR one. Um, we're also going to extend that, um, as administrative rule to allow, um, individuals, we're just gonna carry that one forward from last year to allow individuals whose job will allow it to work from home, um, which could include teachers teaching remotely. Could, um, be somebody in the business office doing finance from home, you know, type of things. Because we have the remote software that people can log into our systems and also, um, be able to log in and teach from home. Um, that would still, um, probably require a sub in that classroom. So it's not that we would be kind of, we would have to have a sub for coverage, but the teacher may be there, um, kind of providing instruction or at least sending in, um, assignments for them to do. So that would be the remote work, um, and we would do that based on those. And like, um, it states here in the eligibility, bus drivers wouldn't be able to qualify for remote work. So it would all be based on, um, types of jobs.
You mean we don't have a remote control system for our school buses yet?
Not yet. Um, and that goes along with remote instruction. Um, with our remote instruction would be, um, grading and access materials and communication that would also, um, carry forward as we were working with, um, teachers to interact in creative ways to, um, continue learning if they are out due to quarantine. Um, we will have to kind of tread lightly with this one, um, as we are assigning duties to teachers, um, and asking them to do certain things. Because the, um, state has also put out, and I can't remember if it's law or proviso, but there's something out there that, um, instructs us that if we have any teachers teaching in dual modality, so that is, um, that they are teaching both in-person and online at the same thing, at the same time. We have to provide additional compensation. And so, um, that is out there. Um, we have a few that we have done that purposefully. Um, that we've had some virtual classrooms that we were not able to cover through our EdOptions. That we have a teacher or two that is doing both, um, in that setting or that we have somebody picking up a section of a virtual. Um, but majority of our virtual is all through our EdOptions Academy, but we have had to do a little bit of that. But we're trying to tread very likely to stay legal on both sides of that. Um, so what we require a teacher to do, um, will be, um, kind of based on looking at that and what our remote work says. Um, for, if a teacher is at home quarantining, they're not teaching dual modality because they're not in-person teaching. They would be then teaching and kind of providing instruction from home. They would be then teaching and kind of providing instruction from home virtually. So just kind of know whenever we come up with a teacher still in the building but a kid's at home and we're saying they need to be teaching both at one time, that's where we would have to start paying compensation. And then keeping track of that, how many days are we going to allow that for one student or when five students are gone, when 10 students are gone? So what are those stipulations? So it'll be more of posted assignments, here's your work, keep up with it, and kind of go forward with that versus telling everybody they have to go dual modality at any given moment based on some of the legislation. The virtual board meetings, I don't know if y'all want to discuss that one about still being able to utilize that policy?
I think that's a great option that we just need to leave in place unless anybody sees a reason to change that.
The opt-out of onsite instruction. We don't really use this anymore because it was whenever a teacher may not want to come in the building but wants to fully instruct from home. And then we provide a monitor for that classroom. That's not really an option that we want to have to provide. There may be instances that we need to institute this, but I think we would rather utilize that as a remote work approval versus having this as an administrative rule to where it's kind of open for everybody. We'd rather go through a remote work process there. So it's kind of our recommendation that we will remove this rule.
Okay.
This also addresses some of the students, but we already offer a virtual program too. Student attendance in here, J E R. This is, I can tell you, attendance last year was very hard. Whenever we had students that had five days to make up work whenever they were out due to being COVID-related or if they were out, all the makeup work, getting all that reconciled, trying to track truancy and all those kind of pieces. Well, the state has finally released how we're to do attendance last week for this school year. So we now have new policies and, not new policies, I don't mean, that's kind of a broad word, new rules on how they want us to track attendance, which is different than we have last year with different coding. So the coding failed whenever it tried to upload in Power School the other day. So we're waiting for that coding to happen. It may have happened today or over the weekend. But that's going to be something that we're going to go back out and train our admins and also our attendance clerks on how to track that. There are now codes that we have to kind of adhere to to show that if they are out due to COVID or if they are virtually being temporary, so they're able to do their work off-site and turn that in, or if they're also our school, I mean, our state board-approved virtual academy. So all that coding has changed from last year versus just being S C flu and virtual present. So that is something that I have not had a chance to tie all the attendance rules now to the attendance administrative rules that we have. So that'll come back next month with a recommendation there. And visitors to school facilities. In our reopening plan, we did say that they would be allowed back in the building. As we are looking at not requiring masks, you know, we still in our system said that we may limit that due to sizes, number of cases, and that type of thing. We have not told administrators anything yet as in to start kind of limiting that. They may be doing some of their own kind of socially distancing, kind of cohorting and that type of thing as our numbers are spiking right now. So this one would just be the school facility. The mask would not be required, but we may recommend them as they come in. And some of that may be limited as we go forward.
So is this particular administrative rule, is this something because it contradicts our reopening plan, should we just eliminate it?
Yeah. I think so because we already have what visitors are expected to do in our policy. So we can adhere to that and then I think pair that with our reopening plan and just kind of let our reopening plan guide us for visitors.
I mean, and I think individual schools are going to be different as well. And I would think the principals could, you know, if there's something, you know, exciting happening at Hickory Tavern, you know, Ms. Addy may say, okay, we're not going to allow visitors for a while for whatever reason.
She's had a calm five days.
Yeah. We don't know what event will happen in Hickory Tavern next, but...
Now, on this side, I've seen, traveling around myself, I've seen a lot of questionnaires when you go somewhere, they'd ask if you've been out of country or if you've been out of region. That may be a question you may want to add to your visitor questionnaire.
I think that was the last policy. Any other questions for policies and rules?
It looks like we're good. Thank you, Dr. Pennon.
Thank you.
So we're removing?
The K I dash R.
Okay.
Hey, Mr. Wallace.
Good evening. I believe each of you should have received a copy of the financial report for July. Our balance with the treasurer's office as of the end of July was $7,804,114. And that is the first time in quite a while that our year-over-year comparison has shown an increase in funds on hand. As I had mentioned in the past, we've expended a great deal of money for which we were requesting reimbursement. And this rebound reflects that those funds have now started being returned back to our district. Our fiscal year-to-date revenues for the first month were $2,726,270, which was roughly in line with last July with the general fund expenditure for that same period of $1,075,888 for a difference of $1,650,382. The tax collections for July were $738,894. Does anyone have any questions about that before we move on to the items that will require board action? Okay. So the first item that I'll be bringing before the board tonight is a resolution for our annual general obligation bond. This year's bond issue would be for an amount not exceeding $6,175,000. This amount would not require an increase in property tax mileage. The purpose of our bond issue is twofold. First, it provides $3,122,038 for payment of the lead corporation bonds, which is the only long-term debt that is owed by the district currently. Secondly, the remaining funds, estimated $2,990,000, would be used to cover the cost of the issuance and to fund the district's capital projects that were approved by this board as part of the budget process. This bond issue would be repaid using debt service funds before the end of our fiscal year. So we would, continuing our trend of long-term debt reduction, the lead corporation bond is currently scheduled to be paid off in 2030. This resolution would require board action for us to be able to proceed with the issue. If this resolution is approved, the bond sale will occur this coming Thursday, August 26.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Wallace? We could get a motion for the general obligation bond resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of not exceeding $6,175,000 general obligation bond of school district number 55 of Lawrence County, South Carolina, for the payment of said bond and other matters relating thereto.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Thank you, Ms. Ware. Any questions, any discussion? All those in favor of approving the general obligation bond resolution? That's unanimous, Ms. Wilson, so the bond resolution passes. Thank you, Mr. Wallace.
Thank you very much. The second item that I'll be bringing before the board is a resolution to authorize the issuance of a tax anticipation note not exceeding $3 million. This note would be issued through SCAGO, the South Carolina Association of Governmental Organizations, which would issue a large short-term note on behalf of numerous South Carolina school districts. This structure reduces the cost and administrative burden to the individual borrowers while providing the cash flow that is needed by many school districts in the fall months before the counties start collecting real estate taxes. The proceeds of the note would be received in September. The repayment would be due in March with three equal installments in January, February, and March after the local taxes have been received. Because it's a short-term borrowing, it has no effect on our constitutional debt limits. Last year was the first time in several years that we had participated in the TAN program. We were fortunate last year that our district never had to actually tap into those borrowed funds. We had used it as a safety net. And it was a great comfort knowing that we had that cash cushion there if there was an unexpected delay in receiving reimbursements from the state. It's our hope that we would be able to do that again this year, just adding an extra layer of security during times when we find ourselves expending and receiving large sums of money that are extraordinary in nature. We're requesting $3 million, which represents over one month of payroll costs, but that is significantly lower than the 5.5 million that we borrowed last year. If the board approves the resolution, the funds that we receive in September would be invested in the local government investment pool until needed. The interest received in that account would offset at least partially the cost of the borrowing. Right now, the short-term borrowing rates are still very low and we have been receiving good returns in the investment pool. So if everything goes well, we would be able to pull those funds right back out of the investment pool to repay the notes. If the collections come in more slowly than we anticipate, then those funds would serve as a cushion until the tax money is received. And this resolution would also require board action.
It was very low.
Ma'am?
Interest rates?
Yeah, it was very low.
We wouldn't know until the sale occurs next month, so...
So it kind of fluctuates so much?
Ma'am?
So we don't know anything as far as like how it fluctuates?
No, ma'am.
Until after?
No. We're sub-two percent. And it's only like a, you're borrowing in September and repaying by March. You're less than one-half of a year. Last year's note was, in addition to just the interest rate difference, because it's generally considered a safe investment, last year's TAN, the big bond that served all districts, was sold at a premium. So we actually received, we issued a $5.5 million note that we had to pay back $5.5 million, but we actually received more than $5.5 million. So that partially offset the cost of the borrowing as well. So last year's borrowing was extremely low and there's no guarantee until the bond hits the market whether it would be sold at a premium as well.
Any questions for Mr. Wallace?
How'd you come up with $3 million?
It was significantly less than the $5.5.
Do you really think you need that much, I guess?
My hope is that we don't need any of it, Mr. Warner. But, you know, last year, we were sort of shell-shocked with the COVID environment. $5.5 million was two months of payroll, essentially. Two months of total cost for all employees. And we felt like that was a good, just ballpark figure. But then borrowing $5.5 million and sitting on it and not ever using it, I didn't really want to do it again, even though the cost, though, was pretty dang low. $3 million, it was pulled out of the air. It was something that would make me, gave me a little warm, fuzzy feeling without being as large as what we'd done in the prior year.
Being the cheap dad that I am, could you live with $2 million? Where is your comfort level? That's what I'm getting at.
That'll at least cover it.
Salary.
So like, as I had mentioned, this was the first month in a long time that we've had, a year-over-year where we've had more cash than we had at the same time last year. Now, keep in mind that we had at one point $10 million with the treasure. So $3 million, you know, over the course of the last few years, although we've kind of restored it in the last month, we're still below cash on hand where we are, where we've been traditionally. We're dealing with $15 million plans. We've got a $1 million LED project getting ready to kick off. $3 million, I feel good about. I don't know about less.
I'll read this one's longer.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to authorize the issuance of a not-to-exceed $3 million tax anticipation note, Series 2021, taxable or taxable to school district number 55 Lawrence County, South Carolina, authorizing the sale of said note, South Carolina Association of Governmental Organizations, pursuant to the terms of its TAN program, prescribing the terms and conditions under which the note may be issued, providing for the form of note, providing for the payment thereof, authorizing certain officials of the school district to determine certain matters relating to the note and other matters relating thereto.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Thank you, Mr. Rawl. All those in favor of the tax and, oh, I'm sorry, questions, discussion?
One question. Who are the officials in the school district that have the ability to make the determination on that? Just you?
The determination of what?
It says, authorizing certain officials of the school district to determine certain matters relating to the note and other matters relating thereto.
I signed the document saying that we're going to pay it back and then I initiate the wire transfer for that. I believe the designated people that are able to authorize that is myself and there's a member of my staff that is also available to handle the transactions. I think it's either Dr. Thomas or me that signs the documentation.
And you and Mr. Rawl have the actual resolution?
Yes, we have it. You have to sign this before you leave. Okay, with motion and a second, all those in favor of the tax anticipation note? It's unanimous. Thank you. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. And now we have public participation. Ms. Wilson?
I did not receive any requests.
Thank you. Now we will move on to executive session and we will need a motion to go into an executive session.
I'll make a motion in executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Thank you, Mr. Hughes. All those in favor? It's unanimous. We will go into executive session.
We're going to call the meeting back to order. And we do need action for executive session if anyone would like to make a motion, please.
You need motion for?
For the approval of certified contract recommendations.
I'll make a motion to approve the certified employment contact, contract recommendations for school year 2021, 2022.
Sec.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Is there any discussion or questions? All those in favor of the motion? It's unanimous. Thank you. The motion passes. And now we need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Unanimous. We're now adjourned.
Glory.
So there was no discussion on that one.
I'm just going to go ahead and start putting that down.
I'm good on that one.